All.
Hi, everyone. Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller. Attorney is still present.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, y'all. Okay, I need a motion now, madam.
I'll make a motion to move item six B to be heard here.
Here, second. All in favor? Motion. Motion carries. All right.
There we go.
How do the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda? Public comment is that the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. Mister Mayor, I do have a couple that have filled out the speaker comment cards. First is Mister Mike Covell.
Good evening.
Evening. Welcome. Congratulations, y'all. My I'm here to there are two for of the but I guarantee you that we did not sign. These two brave United's Flight Ninety was not just an aircraft. The Pentagon is a special type of building. The World Special Aircraft. I believe the memorial plaque for Flight Ninety Three should be corrected to show an aircraft with two and not four engines. I wonder how many Emory Riddle students have come to this memorial, looked at the Flight Ninety Three plaque and noticed the error. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I have Rachel Farnell.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mister Vice Mayor, and newly appointed council members. Congrats to all of you. I look forward to seeing what the future holds. And I come before you this evening because I wanted to address some information that was made public a couple of weeks ago in regards to our general plan steering committee. I have to be honest, as a community member, when I read the names on that list, it was almost flagrantly obvious to me the amount of nepotism that was shown. I just have a real problem with the idea of family members, close friends, of council being appointed to that steering committee. I'm not even sure that the council should be appointing people because I don't think the steering committee should be representative of our town council. I think it should be representative of our community. I I know a lot of people on the steering committee. I like a lot of the people. I think that they have a lot to offer when it comes to this community. But I do think there was certain steps that weren't in the best advocacy to represent our town as a whole. And obviously, we can't go back and change that. But I'm hopeful that going forward, we can make better decisions and having a like gross representation of our community, not just a select group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I have Randy Stuflick. Stuff like.
Hello, my name is Randy Stuflick. My wife and I live at four seventy-five Messenger Lane, Chino Valley, Arizona. This question is addressed to Mayor Miller, members of Chino Valley Town Council and Town Manager Cindy Blackmore. More than more than thirty days has passed since our attorney sent a letter to each of you asking for a response within thirty days. On November ninth, a certified return receipt for the letters was received, signed by a town hall employee. At this time, no response has been received from any of the requested individuals. Just so we are all on the same page regarding our concerns, we would like to verify that each of you received your copy. Did you get the letter or not?
I'm sorry, we cannot respond to you.
Okay, well, if you did not get it, request it. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are the only speaker comment cards that I have, Mister Mayor.
Okay, I would ask.
Looks like somebody has one, but did not turn it in. Is it Sotello? And is it for call to the public? Okay. So we have Mister Sotello.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. We have an issue with the way we we have an equine living next to us in the town. We've already brought this up. You guys partially approved it. We still have issues with it being where it's at and all the situations.
Mister Mayor, if I may, is this on an item that's on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, we were notified.
Okay, so then we'll actually have you speak during the public comment on that section, okay? Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the town manager if she would have our chairman of the nine eleven board get in touch with Mister Covell.
Absolutely, Mayor, we'll look into it.
And then if we can maybe get Rachel to answer on the procedures from the service we hired for the grant rewrite.
We'll be in touch.
And then have the our attorney or somebody respond to Mister the Messenger Lane issue.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Think of anything. Go ahead, Amy. I saw you dancing.
Well, I just wanted to say December to remember this past Saturday was amazing for everybody that came out and helped and our record department. Got kids got to sit with Santa and give all their wishes and get books that were from the library, which were amazing. And it was a good time. So just shout out for that. Thank you to everybody.
Okay. Bob, you got anything?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right. Then about you have anything, Sin? I'm sorry, Mrs. Blackmore.
Mayor, council, just a couple of things. Just a reminder to everyone that this is our only meeting for the month of December due to the holidays. And our town clerk is still accepting applications for commission as well as for the building advisory board. So you can go onto our website and find out information if you'd like to apply or contact our town clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anybody want to pull anything on this side?
Nope.
How about this side over here?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda. A through D.
Second.
Derek and Louise. Oh, I'm gonna butcher your last name. Perazas? Peraza?
Pereira.
Pereira, sorry.
Probably butchered it, too.
Uh, to you center on residential property located at six eighty South Fire Sky Lane. Will.
Alrighty, good evening, Mayor.
Excuse me, but Mr. Mayor, just before we go, I just want to make sure I for full disclosure. And I grabbing signatures and they presented this issue to me. Time where they broke down and they stopped communicating with the town. And I convinced them to continue working with staff and outside. Still sort of on this topic. Unbiased, but I want to make sure this council is okay with that on this agenda item.
We'll see what our lawyer has to say.
Microphone's not on.
And you gotta get real close or Aaron Hall or such.
Mayor, member of the council, council member. If you most that you feel you need to recuse yourself, it's it's an individual decision that you have to make. The council can't vote on that. If what I hear you saying is that you don't believe you do have a conflict of interest. You just want everyone to understand you want to be very transparent with everybody. And and that's I think that's your prerogative to make that kind of statement. But the council can't really weigh in on that. If you're if you're at that's a decision that that you have to make, sir. Looking at decision here, I just wanted to be fully disclosed. Okay.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor.
So you're good staying.
Yes. All right, alrighty. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Will Dingy, senior planner here with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a request for a conditional use permit for an equine rescue center by Derek and Luis Pereira, who are the applicant and property owner. Luis, I do not believe is here this evening, but Derek is. So if the council does have any questions specific to this case or the property owner, he is available to answer them this evening. So staff felt it relevant to give a little bit of parameters or background on what a conditional use permit is. We do have two new council members seated this evening. And since we don't get more than one, maybe two of these a year, just to kind of provide some context. So a conditional use permit or abbreviated as a CUP is a use that because of special requirements or characteristics may be allowed in a particular zoning district only after review by the commission and council, granting a conditional use approval by imposing such conditions as necessary to make the use compatible with other uses permitted in the same zoning district or vicinity. So that's the whole name of the game with a conditional use permit is making the use compatible that might not be compatible out the gate. So the property itself is five acres in size, located southwest of the Molly Ray Estates subdivision. Has a physical address of six eighty South Fire Sky Lane. It is currently part of a defunct subdivision known as the Angus Acres subdivision. Existing permitted land use on site is a single-family residence and the keeping of livestock. And then existing unpermitted land uses is the Equine Rescue Center, which is currently in operation today. And the sale of hay, manure, straw, and railroad railroad ties and other donated assets, both from the property itself as well as being delivered from the property itself. Zoning for this parcel as well as the parcel surrounding it is SR two point five, which is a single-family residential two and a half acre minimum. This area of town is largely one acre in size and greater. Every residential zoning district of one acre in size or larger larger does have the agriculture or the allowance to keep livestock as well as have agricultural uses associated with the property. And that is important because Chino Valley is a little unique when it comes to the keeping of livestock as they are the only ones through staff's research. The only community that does not have a form of capacity on horses or cattle keeping a max quantity for those within town limits. The only thing that we do restrict are swine. We did do some research of surrounding areas like similar communities. Kind of compiled it here on the right-hand side of the screen just for reference on how other communities do approach this method or this regulation. But as of today, our code currently states that there is no capacity limit on cows or horses within town limits. With that being said, this case has been going on since early twenty twenty-two. Started off with several code enforcement complaints through through surrounding neighbors, specifically in regards to the amount of animals on site, property well-being, and then amount of flies being generated from the activities on site. So after receiving several of these complaints, staff reached out to the property owner to get them in for a pre-application meeting in May. The idea, the goal of this meeting was to generate a path forward, be it a rezone or a conditional use permit, to try to see if the uses that are currently ongoing, there is a way to shape those into something that was compatible to the surrounding neighbors to make it a win-win for either party. The conclusion of that meeting was to proceed with a conditional use permit. The property owners did apply for that. And there was a neighborhood meeting held on in June of twenty twenty-two. Following that neighborhood meeting, the dialogue that staff along with the applicant, staff crafted a pretty substantial list of conditions associated with this conditional use permit. As part of our process, it is to review these conditions with the applicant. This, because it was substantial, it did take quite a bit of time, quite a bit of meetings, both in person, on site, and phone calls with the property owner to try to reach this middle ground to where we shaped these into something that was usable or agreeable to the property owner. So because of this timeline, it did unfortunately fall outside of our standard case timeline, which was to have this case, the planning and zoning in August. The case was continued because of this, because we couldn't reach that agreement until late August, early September. Once that agreement was met, we did put this on the agenda for the October Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The item was heard by the commission. Following a lot of dialogue from staff between staff, the commission, the public, and the applicant. The commission recommended several modifications to the proposed conditions at the time. They decided it was best to continue the item so staff can recap every change and then present that again in November as a for a final discussion and then voting. It did go back in November last month and the commission did forward a recommendation of approval with a five-one vote. But there was additional dialogue that further restricted specifically the self-imposed capacity of livestock on site. We'll talk about that in the next slide here. And then to date, staff has received six letters in opposition of this CUP, all from directly adjacent property owners. So with a conditional use permit, we have conditions. I'm not going to go through all twelve that we have. I'm going to touch base on number three, four, five, and six. The remainders can be found within your packet. But these four specifically were the big talking points that staff heard, the commission heard from the neighbors. And we feel that these conditions have been crafted to mitigate these issues that were brought up. So number three itself, the conditional use permit shall be valid for initial twelve-month period. The initial thought was to have this for a six-month period to get all of the physical improvements that were going to be required for this conditional use permit done. However, that six-month window puts us in through winter and early spring. It's not exactly conducive for a lot of site work specific to a farm. So we wanted to give the applicant benefit of the doubt to give him twelve months to get everything done and get it right as rain. If council chooses, obviously, to approve this conditional use permit, after this twelve-month period, it would go back to planning and zoning commission to be reviewed and to be essentially assured that they are meeting these conditions. And then the planning commission would have the opportunity to extend the conditional use five years. Number four was probably the biggest topic of excuse me, of discussion. And this involves the self-imposed capacity of livestock for the property. In your packets, currently, there is a typo for the natural disaster allowance. There was previously fifty, but Planning and Zoning Commission requested that it be cut down to thirty. So there is the correction made on your screen here. When applicant originally approached the town, the request was for seventy total between cattle and horse on site, so thirty-five, thirty-five split between there. Staff was able to discuss this with the applicant and get it reduced down to fifty before it was taken to planning and zoning for the first time. Through the first iteration in October, planning commission reduced that down to thirty. And then the subsequent meeting in November, it was requested that it was to be reduced down to twenty for daily activities and then and then thirty for a state of emergency. The applicant is not in agreement with that, and he would like to approach the council to offer a suggested increase on that. But if that is ultimately up to council's discretion on that end. Number five, the hours of operation. The original discussion was to have it from dawn to dusk. That changed to a hard day or hard time of seven eight to seven P M. Monday through Saturday for fundraising activities. And then all equine activities between Monday and Sunday, seven A M. to seven P M. Veterinary emergencies are considered exempt. And then number six was probably the final one for the big issues has to do with how the property is maintained. So the applicant shall feed all animals or remove animal manure from enclosures daily. The applicant shall place animal manure in an enclosed waste area until it is removed off-site each week. This was one of the bigger concerns because as larger acreage farms, you tend to spread out the manure due to the size and the quantity of animals on site. This was unsuccessful and generated a lot of nuisance for the neighbors. And the applicant is in agreement with this, and he has contracted with Prescott Dirt to accept weekly essentially donations of his manure. They do have a five-ton dump trailer that they'll fill up weekly that will then be deposited with Prescott Dirt. Applicants help provide water and onsite at all time, shade, which is currently in the process of constructing. Another one of the big issues was they had a livestock trespass issue with an adjacent neighbor where you want to ensure that they have adequate fencing to keep that at no no longer happening. And then finally, the fly control. So we want to make sure that that's adequate on there. We believe the manure mitigation will help substantially with this, but then we'll have the property owner will be required to have bag fly traps onsite at all times or other biological methods. So with that, we are recommending that the council open up a plan or a public hearing with this item. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission does forward a recommendation to town council of approval for this conditional use permit with the corrected conditions of approval presented to you this evening. And I will go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion.
Okay, now is time for council to have questions for staff. We'll start here to the far right down there, Bob.
Is the mic on here?
Is it light on?
I was wondering how much time the staff is going to be spending on policing the property.
So right now, we had discussed in periodic inspections to ensure they essentially have twelve months to get that up to code per the conditions. Whether it's weekly checkups, biweekly, monthly, or just making sure that he's following up with building permits. We don't have a set time at this point.
And then what happens if he does not follow the rules right off the bat?
Sure, right. So he's that twelve-month window. He's got to make this right. And then if he does not adhere to that within that twelve-month window, it is revoked. And it can be revoked even sooner in that twelve-month window if we start seeing an increase in livestock on site or property maintenance starts to deteriorate. So it can be initiated by staff at a sooner timeframe.
So the residents that oppose to it, they're gonna have to deal with it for a whole year?
The idea is that these conditions will mitigate that until he gets there, but correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, could you pull up on the screen the property, please?
Yeah.
And can we zoom in a little bit?
You know, I can do one better here.
If it's two and a half acres, I just want to get some perspective.
So it's five acres in size total.
Okay, that makes more sense. So after you guys developed the CUP, there were still six letters against it.
So that came in following the neighborhood meeting. And I believe a lot of them are still in opposition, even following these conditions.
Okay, so just for clarification, this started as a code enforcement issue?
Correct.
With animals being the nuisance.
Correct.
And now we're looking at a CUP for an equine rescue hay sales.
Correct. With substantial reductions. Because currently, right now, town does not have a cap on livestock, so it's pretty much open-ended. With this conditional use permit, there will be a quantity, self-imposed quantity that is agreed to by the applicant but enforced by council through this conditional use permit.
And the quantity is twenty head?
Twenty, right now, the applicant does wish to have dialogue with the council to potentially increase that. So if that's something council would wish to hear that is on.
And that's mixed between horses and cattle?
Correct.
I'm done for now.
With the hay sales, how's how's that gonna affect traffic on Fire Sky?
So it's already going on right now. So as far as any sort of traffic study or anything like that, we haven't required that. He's been doing this, I believe, about five years now, and it just really came to staff's attention through these code enforcement violations. I do know there was a lot of traffic concerns as far as time of day where they would bring their their semi in with their loads of hay. We are hoping that the hours of operation restriction, that seven A M. to seven P M. will help mitigate a lot of the noise issue with that. But I can't really speak to how busy they do get with onsite traffic.
That part of Fire Sky is not paved, right?
It is paved.
Part is paved.
Um, so basically, what this showing us is that we have three point four acres where the horses are.
Correct, sir.
And cows, but it's total of twenty or twenty each?
Total of twenty split, so it can be fifteen horses, five cow.
Okay, that's why it's a total of twenty. And then has there been any citations issued?
It was put on hold to hopefully get some sort of agreement or some sort of.
And now, and the last question is, are we setting a precedence by allowing this to happen here for anybody else that has five acres to be able to have twenty animals on their five acres?
I would say.
Or three point four acres?
Sure, I would say the precedent would be set with so long as they follow the similar the the conditions that are being presented tonight. So it wouldn't just be, they could do that outright with a conditional use permit. They would be required to follow the same conditions that would be discussed tonight or approved tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, along with the mayor's question, on the twenty, it can be like nineteen cows and one horse or vice versa.
Correct.
Everything. And then your zoning paragraph will, you've got a thing that says, however, while the U D O permits the unrestricted keeping of livestock, equine rescue is not listed as permitted use or conditional use.
Correct.
Not shoot it in the foot right there.
So is within the conditional use, there is that final paragraph that states any uses that could be determined by the zoning administrator that could be deemed compatible with the hopes of the conditions. So right now, it is it is an allowable use within the AR five zoning district, AR four and AR five, commercial agriculture and livestock keeping. It is not within there. So did staff did feel like this was a potential option for these property owners.
Okay. Be interesting seeing the public hearing.
Town borders of Chino Valley.
I think we have five that we are aware of, and I'm sure there are a couple more that.
Father, would this be consistent with how they're functioning?
I don't know. A lot of them are revolving doors as far as how many they keep on site. I do know several of the larger ones keep more, but it's never been a code enforcement issue because they keep their property up. And that that from my understanding is, and my belief of how the code is written, is that we don't cap it because it's up to the property owner to ensure that whatever quantity they have on site is adequately maintained. is that we don't cap it because it's up to the property owner to ensure that whatever quantity they have on site is adequately maintained.
Right.
So and that's what, why we are here today, because the original belief was they could not adequately maintain it at that given quantity when this case was initiated.
Okay, thank you.
Will, do you have any idea what these five others, what size they are? Are they ten acres, fifteen acres? Is there somebody doing it on a half acre? What's going?
Haven't seen one on a half acre, but most of them are five acres and up. There's a couple on North Road One West towards five north. You have a by humane society operates one, I believe they're on five, seven, five or seven acres. There's one additional to that directly north, that's on ten. There is one over off of Hawkinsville Road South over kind of by the Salida to Soul area, I believe they are on thirteen acres. And I believe there is one over on Reyes as well that is on five acres.
But no restrictions on head count on those.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other follow up questions for staff? Thank you, Will.
Yeah.
We'll have the applicant come up and we'll see if we have what he has to say and questions for him. Good evening.
Good evening, council. So I'll start with any questions that you all may have.
Any questions on this?
And one of the oppositions that I read, your gate is locked. And when the semi comes up or other trucks come up to make pickups or deliveries, they have to sit out there for a while in the street and block the street until somebody can come and unlock the gate.
Okay, and what about that? The, you're saying there was a, I'm trying to understand what the.
The letter of one of the opposition from the resident around there. They said that the gate was, is always locked. And when a truck comes to make a delivery or a pickup, they're sitting out in the driveway or blocking the street until somebody can come and unlock the gate so they can go in.
Okay. When it comes to most people that come there, because and mainly my father, and I understand that sometimes I leave the gate unlocked so people can come in and they can can open the gate. But my father doesn't just want people coming in unchecked. But when there's a semi, usually I'm, I'm the one driving the semi there and I, I have the gate and I'm on the the street for, for a couple of minutes, but I have a, but you would call a throat. So most vehicles, trucks and so forth, they can come into my throat of my driveway. And they usually convey to me or someone that they're coming. And then I, I work to make sure that gate, because he, he wants me to control that gate, doesn't want just people coming in and out, because we've had problems before with people just coming in and out of that gate, opening the gate, just driving in the yard. So it's like this is, it's more of a controlled gate. So that's why it was like that. So I'm not sure who, but I understand what you're saying. And, and that's basically how it's been.
I was just reading what the resident was complaining about.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
How many animals do you have now?
After rehoming three horses last week, we have sixteen horses, thirteen, thirteen cows, even counting some smaller, smaller ones, some goats and some chickens and some dogs.
Okay, so you're already at like the thirty area?
Yeah, we've been, we've been, well, we had, at one point, we had over twenty horses. About the same amount until I added some more cows. And then we sent off bulls, and that's what, that's another thing that was talking to P and Z before, if I may mention about cattle. And they were talking, they were saying that, which I thought was interesting because you have all this livestock on state lands and in this, in different parts of the town with barbed wire holding them in, and they said barbed wire doesn't hold in cattle, which was, didn't make any sense to me seeing all that, but if you have an aggressive bull or you have an animal, if you've seen what those animals are capable of doing, that's that, so that animal and, and many other bulls, they, and we were waiting for over, I don't know, how many months for the livestock inspector to come and inspect me? You can't just take them to auction or wherever and sell them. You have to get the, because the cattle rustling, you have to get the livestock inspector sign off on that. So it's, it's a little different with, with cattle.
Okay, so just for some clarity, I have cattle and horses, so I understand that perspective, okay? I don't understand how you're housing these animals on three and a half acres. Do you have pens set up for them? I mean, we're just looking at a, an overlay here.
This is a pretty old picture.
Okay.
That I'm looking at, which doesn't surprise me.
It's Yavapai G I S. You gotta take it for what it's worth.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I'm just trying to look at what, what's in front of us here. So we have this barn here, we have some pens, we have these, these outside areas that have been fenced in. The point nine acres is where the cattle are. The one point one acres over here is where the horses are. There's some other pens or, or smaller fenced off areas over here where the one point four acres is, so that's where, where they are.
And is your equine rescue a nonprofit five oh one C three?
Yes.
What is the name of it?
The name is Equine Rescue.
Okay.
That's the registered name.
And how long have you been operating?
I believe it was two thousand eighteen.
I'm good for now.
Do you plan on building more structures?
You mean covers or?
Covers.
Yes, we have, we have covers that, that we got donated to us and we plan to build according to the agreement, covered areas in the the spaces of which the animals are. So there's basically want shade structures in those areas.
And for twenty, let's say you have twenty horses, do you have adequate room to house them in? Are you gonna, are you gonna separate the, the horses and the cattle?
They already are. The horses and the cattle are separated.
Are they separated by one point four and one point one acres?
No, the nine, point oh nine, he said.
Point oh nine is.
Yeah, they're. And then there, there's horses basically across the, this bottom half of the property. And then, and then the cows are up there in the, the top, right?
So if you have nineteen horses down at the bottom, and you have one cattle, is that fair for the horses? Got enough room to? For the horses to hold?
This is an interesting topic, because I was talking to other people about this and, and other facilities where they have a lot of horses on the acreage and they, they have them in, in stalls. You know, and some people, I mean, we, I give, I give the animals as much space as I can give them on that property. Other, other people have them in a, in a, if you know what some different sized stalls look like. And that's all they get is maybe a, at most a twenty by, by twelve space. They can never run or do anything because they don't have the space to do it. So some people, to some people that stalling a horse is acceptable, other people, they want to have them out in at least an acre worth of land.
Are you content with this proposal from the town?
The, the amount of animals?
Yes, the whole thing.
So I'm good with, and, and I will, and I have been getting many items done up to this, to this meeting to work towards this meeting this as fast as possible. The only thing is, and, and it was the thing that I was talking to my father, because when I was here talking to P and Z about working to reduce the amount of animals on the property. We were, we were talking about the number thirty. So that's what we, that's what I was talking to my father about, about the amount of animals. Currently, we have that amount of cattle and horses and some other animals there. And so I've worked to reduce some and I'm working to reduce some more. But the that, that number, I think is, is more, more doable to thirty than the twenty. But it's, it's up to you guys to vote on the amount of, the number of which we can have.
Do you live on the property, sir?
Yes.
How about your father that you mentioned? Is he also living here? Kids?
No kids.
No kids. Okay, thank you.
Gets approved. I mean, what's significant? I mean, you have a year to get rid of nine animals. If I did my math right, you said sixteen horses, thirteen cows, is that right?
Yes.
So if the council were to approve twenty, get down nine animals from where you are today, correct?
Correct.
Would you live with that number? Can you make it work with that number? Is there a reason why it has to be thirty?
So the main thing that my father expressed to me about that, and I was talking with him about was because we started off at a certain amount, and then we went down and then worked to that. And then we had a meet and confer meeting with the, with the town about the amount of animals that we could have, and they said thirty, and they said this is what the, the P and Z is saying is thirty. And then the next meeting, they took it down to twenty, and I said, well, it's just like all these, all these certain things that I have to live within is, I said, well, and I understand what you're saying about, about that. And there's, I know there's at least four more horses that are working to rehome. So that would help get down closer to that number. Possibly we could meet in the middle on that, hopefully, maybe, but it's just there are certain animals that he has there that are, that are sanctuary horses and, and so forth that he has, and then he wants to have some of his cows as well, so. But I, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I think one way or another will, will make it work.
Well, yeah, that's what I wouldn't do. Yours. I'm in a suburban neighborhood, if you want to call it, and I have horses. So I go to extra lengths to clean my manure up every single day. Two fold, one, I don't want to make my annoying neighbors have to look at it all the time, and two, I hate flies. I really, I despise flies. So I know what two horses do. I, I, you know, I pick it up every day, twice a day, so I know how much manure there is with two horses. I can only imagine what it's like with thirty or cows, it's even bigger, am I wrong? Cow manure is much bigger than horse manure.
Yes, I, I, I understand what you're saying. And so basically, that's, that was his, his main argument, because that's where we were, we were coming to that number. And now we're talking about another number, so that was why, that, that whole discussion, that was the main, out of the whole list, that was the main point of discussion that he had. So.
All right, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Oh, wait, did you say something?
No, I was not to the applicant.
Anything else you'd like to say right now?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The county reference was one. Was it one?
I don't have it up anymore.
Will's got it.
It's right here.
They have a weird point system that they use. So they say farm animals on lots, one point six acres or larger are limited to two full size hoofed animals per acre or fraction thereof. And then any additional acreage over one point six, they use a point system and they assign a goat is X of llama is X, they add it up to an ultimate equation there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wait.
Okay, you guys ready for public hearing?
Yes.
I'm gonna declare the public hearing open, and we'll have the town clerk claw called on public for comments. I can't say it, my tongue went sleek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have Kathy Middlestead.
Good evening. I'm in support of this project. Shocking, huh? I'm in support of it. I just have a couple of issues. When this went last, the last time to the planning commission, Mr. Switzer made the motion to redo the number of animals to be, he quotes animals to be reduced to twenty with an additional ten during a disaster situation. Two questions I have. Animals, is that a combination of horses and cows? Is that horses? Is that horses, cows, dogs, goats, sheep? What's constituting animals? All through the planning commission comments, it's always been discussed, discussed a combination of horses and cows. So I'm just looking on the recap of the minutes from that last meeting. And so I'd like to have that clarified. Number two, on that same topic, during a disaster period, the applicant is given three weeks to up that number to whatever this council agrees to if they approve this. So after three weeks, what does the applicant do with these animals in a disaster? How does he magically make them disappear? What, what's the process involved in that? You know, there's been no discussion on what does he do with these? Okay, the other thing, I did some calculations based on the horses being a one point one acre. If he had thirty horses in that one point one acre, doing the calculation, each horse would have one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven square feet. That's the size of a typical three bedroom, two bath house. If he had twenty horses, he would have per horse, two thousand three hundred and almost ninety-six square feet. That's almost the size of my house on a one acre lot. That we're going through, most of the public comments have been, they want to keep Chino rural. And my thing is what an admirable thing this young man and his father is doing for Chino Valley. And it appears like there's a need if there's five other people out there with horse rescues. And now he's trying to do a horse rescue. I'm, I'm for the horse. My, my only concern is I want to make sure the horses are taken care of. The other thing is the underlying zone in the U D O doesn't look.
You're out of time, ma'am. Sorry.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Holt.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm kind of at a loss of words on this, because first off, when Mr. Gingy got up, he says, you know, well, we don't have an ordinance that restricts animals. Now we're trying to restrict the animals. So I think we need to change the ordinance if we're going to do that. I don't think we're ready to do that tonight. A lot of times I'm up here and we're talking about property splits and dividing and doing development. And one thing that's continually said is that people have rights to do what they want with their property in Arizona. And we don't take into consideration that it affects neighbors, but now we're talking about it affects the neighbors to have these horses and cattle on this man's land. It's pretty rural. I drive by that property all the time because I have friends that own a parcel on that street, and I check it for them because they're out of state right now. I haven't noticed it to be a real mess. Now flies come around with, with animals, yeah, I've got a horse. But the flies come around normally in the summer. That's when they're the worst, and sometimes in the fall during monsoon. So, yeah, we do get them. I think if he keeps his manure cleaned up and takes care of the animals, I don't think we. And takes care of the animals, I don't think we should be telling him how many he can have unless we're going to change the ordinance ordinance for everyone. I've got a person down the street with me that's got barely an acre and on half of that, they've got five horses right now. And they don't have any room to work those for animals at all. There's no open land on it. They're all in little eight-by-eight stalls. So. I've seen this property, like I said several times, I've seen it when the animals are out, they aren't crowded. They don't look to be abused at all. They look to be well-fed. And I agree with what Ms. Middlestead said is that it's admirable what they're trying to do. And we can't just expect him to be able to get rid of these animals real quick. Nine months, yeah, to get rid of four animals. But what happens in that same time, if there's an emergency and he needs to take on, you know, five or six or ten animals. Now he's trying to get rid of fourteen animals in nine months. So we really need to stop and think about this a little bit better. Chino Valley is everybody wants to stay rural. Everybody wants to stay a farming community. Everybody wants to be a ranching community. That's what this man does. And that whole area up there is agriculturally, you know, it's it's residential ag. And he's dealing in ag, so I think we should just let him do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Boyd.
Evening.
Good evening. City Council, Town Council, and congratulations. As you know, I am the prior of Yavvad County Parks Director, New Mexico Community Resource Director, city. As a damage manager. And I'm a veteran. I love. The thing. I. Sanctuary, an animal. When we get ninety, hundred, whatever years old, we like to have a place where we can be sanctuary. For one, buy hay for Mr. Pira. I buy. And calves. And transfer back to the maintenance of property, feed for animals, cost a few and so on. I. Why? I can tell. Not getting paid for it. I'm doing it because I believe in those animals. The landscape. Shade structures is planning it to be installed next spring. What does the future look like? And I think we really want to hear that. You mentioned, sir, about the manure, removing the manure. We will have help doing that and I'll. Shoot a little bit more about that. There's the people helping with the horses and the horses themselves. Physical difficulties. That we're talking about.
I'm sorry, sir, you're out of time.
Well, you're you're missing a good thing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marcy George.
Very nice to meet you all. I'm here to speak on the rescue. Um, I live two horses or two doors down and I can tell you that most of what has been said here today is. A lot of what's on that property, who we. There's no new fences. They did start hauling off the manure, but it's only been about. Maybe four, five-ton truck loads, but it's at least four feet deep and taking off the top layer of that manure. It's rancid. I have a guest here from Sedona. She was astounded at the smell. I had my house painted in uh. Uh, August of last year. Or this year and the flies were so severe that they had to stop painting. They were sticking to the paint and it looked like my house was spooked out it. That's not fair. Cost me a lot of money. Had to be repainted, had to be redone. We um. The times that he comes and he goes with his semi-truck is off the charts. The um, I'm with the first lady. I want to know. The um, he says he has sixteen horses and thirteen cows. But he also has goats. I've seen them. There's there's a whole pad or in the back. That they're setting up for the goats. He has over three hundred chickens. Um, and he has a lot of dogs and there are.
Hold on, hold on. Nobody, nobody.
And there are um several turkeys. Um, there's a fourteen-stall barn full of animals. There's feathers. There's more manure to to deal with than just the cows and horses. More stink than just that. They've um. Become trying to be friends with the new neighbor in town. They ended up alienating her. They sent her an email. I have it on my phone. She was coming to this meeting. We both supported, but she was coming to this meeting tonight. And uh she doesn't feel comfortable because she thinks he's going to retaliate if she says anything negative about him. And I think that's pretty scary. The the gate is locked a lot and they march around there with guns. It's an open state. I don't care about that part at all. But how is that? A rescue also has people working with the animals to rehome them. No one works with these animals. There's not ever a trainer out there. There's no one ever trying to ride one. There's no one brushing. I've never in three years, I've never seen a tail get brushed. Ever. So I think that. Last meeting, they said they had uh five rescue horses there in the rest of our sanctuary. Okay, so. How does that work? How does the chickens work? How do all of the other animals that they have? I I just don't seem to understand how that can fly. I'm from a rodeo industry. I used to team rope. I had horses. I had a cow calf operation. I know that there's way to manage. Flies. I even suggested it to him.
Sorry, you're out of time as well.
Mr. Mayor, uh next is Usiel Satella.
Right there. Uh, I'm against it. I actually live right next door.
You should be able to point with a mouse.
That's where it ends. That fence, they have a small bullpen. It's you have. What they use is chicken wire and kind of basically bobwire to pull the. Several times. The manure is two, probably like five feet under the ground. You can see the gaps. It looks like a property when it rains. Does he do anything about it? No, he just smut. Their. Like she said, I've never seen them brought care for these animals. I've never seen a vet check how they are. It's a. I don't see them care for. It's a five-year. It's two. It's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker is James Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. What I want to talk to address your question on the driving in, I'm not going to stand up here and I'm just going to point out some stuff. Here at the front, if you look up here where the cursor is. My truck, I have a ninety-six one-ton duly. And I could pull in here with a trailer and not be on the road. Okay, my truck's twenty-four feet long and I could still pull a trailer and pull in there. Derek, when he comes in all in hay, he will park his truck along here. He walks in, he unlocks the gate, he pulls in when it is locked, he walks back out, drives his truck in. We're talking a total of maybe three minutes. In this nine acre, point nine acres, there there are pens. This this picture is old. But there are pens along here. This is where the feeders are, the waters. The hose, the hose bib is up here and the hose is stretched. There's horses out here. There is also smaller pens here. And here, which holds horses. There's a building here with the Conex boxes with with the arched. Coverings. Kind of like the barn barn is right here. This is where the hay is stored. There are the big nine hundred-pound bales out here. That is true. They're not twenty feet, twenty feet high. I've been there. These horses are well cared for. They're watched over. I've been there when the vet's there. When there's animals in there that need attention, they get it. Derek is outside. I know Derek. He walks around that property a lot. There are people there to help him maintain it. There are people there to help him with sales. There are people that support him. He's doing a good thing. I purchase hay from them. I get hay every other week from there. It's good hay too. Horses love it. Derek goes out and yes, there are times that that truck may come back late. But as I said in the planning and zoning meeting, stuff happens out on the road sometimes with trucks. Trucks can break down, trucks can blow tires. So there are times when Derek has come in late. Maybe ten, eleven o'clock at night, one o'clock in the morning. But he has pulled his truck in, shut it off. He has not unloaded it. He waits until the next day to start up his squeeze in the daylight between those seven, that's seven and seven time. Trucks going up and down this road, traffic, it's not affected, believe me. I've been over there during the day, several different days of the week. And there is never a problem with traffic on the road. Byers, guys, pretty wide road. It's pretty well-traveled. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Anna Satello.
Good evening. My name is Anna Satello and I live next to him, next to them. Uh. Michael. What people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then uh final speaker, Kevin Pereira.
Public speaker. Person, but I'm up here. I have a few points to address with regards to what was just said. Uh, I have a dog. Spends a lot of time with me. I love him. I don't hit him. Me and my family, I'm I'm actually Derek's twin brother. So I'm here to clarify some things. I'm Derek's twin brother. What I've been astonished by what has actually been said because I wasn't here. I took the day off from work because I work at night. I work at Ruger Firearms. I took the day off from work to come here and show support for my brother and what he's doing. I'm there and I help him and I've been astonished by the lies that have been said. And I can tell you that with regards to like the their dog, we had a bull that got out, yeah? Pushed their fence. Their fence is not proper. They have no top rail. They have no tension wire. This is a fenced-out state. If you want the animal to stay off your property, you need to fence them out. You need to make sure you have proper fence. The fence, they took it down and then they put it they put it back up because they knew what they did was wrong. Now, with regards to the flies, we've been working on that. We've been doing things to fix and mitigate issues. Now, you have, like, has been mentioned with regards to. Other sanctuaries, if you want to bring us into compliance, you need to also bring them under the same code that you bring us into. With regards to neighbors, we have a neighbor that has weeds, tumbleweeds, just growing, you know, no problem. So. What I can say is if you want to hold us to a certain standard, you need to hold other people to the same standard. No one's perfect. I don't think you guys are perfect. I don't think I'm perfect, but we're here trying to work this out. And I can tell you with regards to my brother, I've been working with him and I support what my dad and my brother are doing. Now, with regards to this manure being like yay high, that's not true. They've been spread. They they they've spread it before. Now they've been removing it and they've been dealing with it. And I've been there with workers and other people to take care of things and get things done. Now, what I can tell you that the people that are in opposition. They're saying, like I said before, a bunch of lies, especially the neighbor who has a lot of animosity that lives next to us. And with regards to animals, we just had a couple of dogs that came on our property. It was our neighbor's dog. I called the dog, the dog came to me. And we had the dog overnight and then we gave the dogs their neighbor. We have a new neighbor that moved in. You can ask them. Did we abuse that dog? No, we don't. And we've taken care of these animals. And what they're saying is not true. And I can tell you, if you want to come see these animals, say they're not being fed and they're not being taken care of, I'm sure we can do a better job, but that's not true. So with that, I yield back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, Will, you want to come on back up, please?
I want to ask you a couple of questions that were. And one being the combination of animals. They were saying horses, cows.
And one being the combination of animals, they were saying horses, cows, goats, chickens. And I think dogs, I don't think apply, but. Tell me, tell me this combination, how it works with all those animals.
Yeah, the idea is.
Can I interrupt real quick, can we close that public hearing first?
We're going to declare the public meeting closed, I'm very sorry.
Now, all right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the idea is just the regulation of horses and cattle, nothing else. Our our code has the large hoofed animals and then swine being the only ones regulated, chickens, goats, anything smaller and hasn't even been on the table for a discussion as far as quantity.
Okay, and then let's go back to the animal ordinance, the quantity, is that true that there's not one and we're trying to implement one on them?
Uh, we are trying to implement a a quantity correct, it is.
It doesn't exist for other places.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Uh, the disaster after three weeks, what happens?
Uh, it'd be up to the property owner to make sure it gets done.
Well, ply abatement, um, that's in the approval. The deep manure, do you know anything about that?
I do not.
And he made the comment about fencing his animals out versus fencing my animals in. Is that? The, you understand what I mean?
In fact, they keep out, if you want them off your property, keep them out, that's a state level ordinance that if it's there, I I mean. Yeah, it it gets a little wild as far as what the state regulations are on that.
All right, that's all I got, anything over here?
Project started or twenty-two?
Twenty-two, correct. Compared to where it was at the beginning of when we started getting the code enforcement.
And it's new judgment, it's meeting the intent of what code enforcement wanted to achieve.
Correct, with these conditions, if if he's able to adhere to all of them, absolutely, we wouldn't be forwarding a recommendation. The conditions are adhered to, absolutely.
Yep, that's all I have, thank you.
Not sure I'm comfortable with imposing something on him that we're not doing to everybody else. Perhaps we need to go back and review and maybe even alter the ordinance which takes care of this before we even deal with this. Maybe even send it back to planning and zoning to research and find out what's going on there.
Council member, if I may add some clarity to that, so the other rescues within Chino Valley are within the AR district, so they they have a little bit different provision for the livestock and agricultural aspect. They do allow for the commercial keeping, so they're treated a little differently than Mr. Pereira's property. Mr. Pereira has the largest single-family residential zoning district that we have that does allow for a level of agricultural livestock keeping so long as it's primarily non-commercial. So that's why we treat, view these differently from the others.
Yeah, but aren't we partial commercial with the hay sales and stuff combining issues here?
That, yeah, so I mean, it is a fund for sale, that's where this conditional use permit comes in to try to meet this middle ground. Um, staff felt that this was the the best path forward to try to merge the existing use and make it compatible.
Okay.
I'm good, right?
Uh, well, if you were to go out to the property right now, would it be in total compliance and all the prior complaints?
Result, no, it would not, no, the the conditions are designed to get them to that compliance.
Okay, and that started in May?
Correct, and then it was placed on hold as they are coming through the public hearing process.
The gentleman said that it was up to the other people to stop his bulls from going through their fence and I have a problem with that, if he has bulls, he needs to put his own fence in.
Fair point. Fair point.
I'm a city boy.
Um. Okay. Let me see, I haven't opened that, called that, did that. All right, what's the council's pleasure? On this?
I'd like to get a feel for what we're thinking. You know, when you drive into Chino Valley, that's the first thing you see on the first roundabout if you're coming in from Prescott. You see a horse, statue of a horse. Chinos, we often claim we're very equestrian friendly. So to be overly restrictive would be contrary to what we sort of personify, in my opinion it would be. Same time, I think the city has gone, or the town has done a great job trying to accommodate him. Same time, trying to lessen the burden on the neighbors because it can be a burden if you're not taking care of your facility. Same time, Mr. Holt brings good point, we're. Standard, but then you articulate that there's a CUP, we're trying to make something that's not ordinarily allowed in that area, work in that area. So me personally, unless there's no second on this, I would like to see us at least accommodate the residence request that he go up to thirty. Ensure that their neighborhood's not being rotted away with running manures through the yard and, you know, excessive flies, you know, make sure that they actually hold to the requirements of the CUP. That way, everybody seems to be winning, we're we're giving him what he wants, we're helping the neighbors out. A win-win.
Well, do you know if the neighbors are happy with the regulations the town's trying to do here?
Believe you heard from them tonight and they would.
Well, I heard about what the existing conditions are, not not what the new ones are, do you, if you, nobody's made any comment if they would accept that. And then do you know if any of the improvements that they say they've done, has been done?
Uh, no, they they would have that twelve-month window to make sure that that's done.
I'm almost for table in this, doing some research.
I think I'd rather see it brought up to the conditions and then issue the CUP, otherwise we're kicking ourselves.
Kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay. So have them meet the conditions first and then go through the.
How I feel, yeah, it would be to bring it up to code compliance.
What timeframe would you like to see?
Well, they've had since May.
Three months.
What do they lack in?
I thought you were going to say some more.
No.
What is the biggest part, would it be the mitigation of the manure?
The manure fly control, ensuring the animals are kept on site and then the new manure removal overall would accommodate a lot of these. Fly and smell or odor concerns, the hours of operation should accommodate the noise as far as the semi-trucks coming in. So I mean, it's primarily number six here is what five and six are what really mitigates a lot of it.
So how long do you think, what do you think is a reasonable amount of time to allow him to get to the standard?
I mean, so we had proposed a twelve month, if we are going off of what council member Perkins said, if they started in process in May, give them maybe till May of twenty twenty-three. And then if you would like to hear from the property owner, see if that's attainable for them.
Who's going to be the watchdog?
You're looking at him.
Is that you, Will?
I will be.
I have a hard time with this. Because I have horses, I have cattle, I was on the board of directors for a horse rescue for five and a half years, so please don't think that I'm not compassionate, I very, I am very much so. The amount of animals on that small of a property. The fly bags are not going to help that situation, there's, I mean, you can put it in there if you want, but bag fly traps or other biological methods. Those flies aren't going to go away, as long as there's animals there, unless it's cleaned every single day after every single animal, which is impossible to do. Um, that issue's not going to be mitigated, so F's kind of just. Um, in regards to security of livestock. That comes with knowledge, I can't tell you what kind of fencing to have, but it, if you're going to operate a rescue, you should probably make sure it's sufficient to hold those animals. I'm, I would much rather see this be at least the code enforcement complaints taken care of before it's brought back for a conditionally used permit for commercial sales, like we're not even addressing.
Okay, but can we ask the app Ken again if he come up and tell us how long it would take them to bring, come into compliance? It will, once, before he gets, one second, I'm sorry, but this, we're talking twenty large animals, period, no matter if they're sanctuary or.
Uh, for the property.
Vegetarian or whatever.
Exactly, okay, exactly.
Vegetarian. I gotta see this vegetarian cats.
So, um, council, um, the biggest thing that I've seen is like we were and especially the manure. We've removed and Jim Boyd knows because he's been there receiving some of this manure like he said. And and he's using it in his garden, he's in, he's in Paulding. And I've, we were just there today and we've been moving as many, as as the weather and everything allows, uh, manure off, it was incredibly difficult to manage that during the time when we had all this rain. And then we had mud and everything and then had tractor issue and all this stuff. So, and now we've been working towards getting more help, so it's, and then we should have some people coming here soon enough from the probation and they they came, I mean, we we did, uh, well, you probably saw how much, how we got all those weeds down and other people around us were mowing for hours and everything. We had them come in with weed whackers and then we would would be working on fencing and fixing fencing, repairing fencing and we're, we've put up since, uh, this whole discussion I heard about containment of animals and stuff that there was a, there's a fence that's between the the north property and we haven't had, uh, for quite some time, we haven't had any cattle cross over that fence and we have other fence inside that fence. And I'm out there constantly feeding these cattle and I put big bells of hay, those, uh, big bells of hay that were mentioned with the, I mean, they're huge and so tho- those animals have feet in front of them all the time, so this discussion of. You're talking about all these conditions?
Yes, sir.
So. That is a good question, uh, because we will get it done and we have been working on getting it done. The thing is, is that we were under understanding due to the weather and as Will was talking about and going in into this meeting from the P and Z meeting that they were talking about, okay, they're giving us twelve months from the time to probation is granted to be able to come up to compliance. And we've been doing things to move all this, the main thing I think was the manure. And we've been removing many dump trailers of manure. And so I still have more to move, but I, and then I have maintenance to keep up on. And so, and and also animals reduced, so that will reduce the amount of manure being generated. So that was the main thing that was making it, and the weather, that was the main thing, it was making the hardest to come up to, uh, compliance on this, and so now I believe that we're getting better and then and then as weather allows, because there's, there's a thing about shelters, there's a thing about fencing, so we're working on all those things, so we're working on it as fast as we can. And I believe within the next six months, we can get in full compliance with that bearing on the weather, I I can't control, I mean, we've had one of the rainy seasons, that that was the hardest thing to deal with this this year.
Okay, fair enough, so, fair enough, how about, uh? What we can do is make the motion and figure it out. I don't know, are we allowed to discuss? Got to push, but.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, yes, you you can discuss, we we do need a motion at some point, though.
Good way to do it. And I guess we need to make sure, can we do, we're essentially saying we're giving you six months to get it hypothetically. We made a motion to allow the person to go six months to get everything compliance with this.
These standards. We're almost doing a condition, we're we're kind of doing a conditional use permit already.
Yep, except we're giving six months.
But we're giving them six months instead of twelve, right?
Because he's out far out.
Because we're allowing him to continue to operate as he is with the same conditions, just expediting the the time of compliance.
June twenty-seventh?
Is that our next, the council meeting, June twenty, that council meeting?
Then we can just do a status report by then and you guys could tell us.
I like that idea. And that is, Will, just, once again, I'm looking at this printing and that's for twenty animals, not thirty.
Correct, as written, if council would like to discuss the increase.
And then maybe by that time we can get better, uh, public input, that sure, things are better and and if not, then we'll go from there. Okay.
Just for clarity. Maximum number of twenty animals on site, that's only applying to horses and cattle.
Not, not chickens and ducks.
And not goats.
Correct.
And how many goats are we talking?
Twenty. Husbands, no, not husks, because goat, goat.
Mayor, so what I'm hearing.
Hang on, everybody's talking.
Is that possibly you're going to change the motion to change number three to be a six-month period? And then you need to decide on on number four, do you want that to be twenty or thirty animals? So you will just need to change the motion to have that time period changed to number three and or if you wish, also the number of animals.
But I don't, we're not issuing them the CUP though.
One, one point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If if you, because the comment was made that maybe tabling this would be the same as giving them a CUP. I I don't think it would because what staff's position is that they're not currently in compliance. And so if you simply table the motion, I think you're leaving it the status quo, which is that staff still believes they're not in compliance. You haven't taken any legal action to stay enforcement or anything like that, and so now, I mean, of course, staff's going to try and glean what you want from what they've heard here, but they're going to have to make some tough decisions about what they're supposed to do. Whether they should enforce the, you know, the non-compliance issues, how they should handle that in the meantime. And so I think what the what the manager is suggesting is an alternative is you you do have the ability to grant the CUP but change the conditions and then then you would be, I I guess, changing the terms of the compliance. So so instead of saying twelve months, we can say, we'll give you a conditional CUP for six months. Reevaluate it before the commission order, would you go back for the planning and zoning and then come to us again or just write to us? Well, it, Ms. Mayor, council member, um, it, you, you, yes, so the first answer to, the answer to your first question is, yes, you could change the conditions that way. Um, but the, I guess, the the crux of it is if you issue the conditional use permit, you have that ability to impose what conditions you want. If you refer it back to P and Z or you table it without issuing the conditional use permit, that doesn't make it allowed and it doesn't change what's disallowed, basically, you're you're just sticking with the status quo. And then it doesn't make it allowed until it comes back to council, it doesn't have that effect.
Can it be done? You've got twenty animals on basically two and a half acres. With him, his dad, his brother who supports him and volunteers.
That's correct.
He's got help coming in too.
And the probation guys are showing up, little guys in the orange dress suits and stuff.
Well, if it's not attainable, then it goes.
And then six months it goes away and he can't ever do it again.
Well, the CUP would expire and then his compliance with property, yeah. I've seen like Blue Moon, they have more than twenty animals and they're not that much bigger.
The difference is that they are AR five. The difference is that they are AR five.
They're quite large.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And you and you.
Um. So let's make a motion, Stephen. I'm sorry, but.
Uh, well, it's already operating commercially.
Uh, currently, a- as of today, they are.
This would bring them into compliance if he can do.
Okay. How um well, just how long were you receiving complaints before it was? Brought to where it is now? When, like, when was your first complaint?
Uh, we we've had complaints over several years, but the bulk of them came in early this year um. Probably around February, March, and then we um were able to get the applicant in for a pre-application meeting in May.
Okay, thank you.
And and no business license in effect yet?
Correct.
For those complaints from new, from new homeowners that just moved into the area?
Not all of them.
For a while.
Um, I believe there is at least one resident who's been there for thirty plus years.
That's what this is bringing into.
What I read in one of the papers was um, they moved in five or six years ago. And all the other residents were already there. Is that true?
Some, I would say, yes, I I know there are new, a new property owner um in the area that recently just acquired property um. It it's kind of, i- it's not finite one way or another. I'd say it's mixed that people have been there. That predate the prayer family, but then also um came in following the prayer family.
So other people have moved in while the property was. Having its rescue.
Correct.
Are they complaining?
Some are, yes.
But the rescue was there.
Correct.
How long's it taking to get a business license?
With this one, it could be forty-eight hours.
Even with these things that are wrong, he doesn't have to prepare.
Have to get a business license i- i- instilling that. The idea is that the business license would say that he is in compliance.
With all your restrictions.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, are we two talking about this?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. You ready?
Think so.
Your first shard win.
I know. Sorry, keep it that back.
What's that?
The uh. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve a CUP for six months. A number three. And twenty animals maximum on number four. Here.
And possibly all other stipulations as stated.
Prove, to approve the CUP twenty twenty-two. Dash zero one as presented. With the change of number three, six months. And number four to twenty animals. And the conditions of approval at attachment one.
Cool, your motion made?
Okay, five, four and two against.
Can I confirm five and two? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Note for me too. And Mister Shacker, you were a yes? Thank you.
All right. If you do wave sewer connection requirements for seventeen seventy-five Pinto Lane, Mister Marbury, are you still here? There he is, Mass Marvel, man.
Hmm? Looks like Frank's topic isn't very popular.
I'm excited about it.
Okay. We're back at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I'll try and be brief about this. Um, we've got a residence located at seventy seventeen seventy-five Pinto Lane. It's the northeast corner of Pinto Lane in Perkinsville. It's been a vacant lot for years. Uh, homeowner is currently under a building permit and trying to build his home. Uh, paid his connection fees to sewer. Come to find out, there's no lateral installed in that when the sewer was installed almost twenty years ago. Um, our records show. That the sewer's uh top of pipe is at least fourteen feet deep, if those records are accurate, so you're probably digging twenty feet or more. Uh, my opinion, it's not practical to dig that deep. And uh, for one connection on an acre lot. Uh, so uh. What we're requesting, we we talked about this for probably over an hour in utility committee and we came up with an amended emotion. On advice from legal counsel and and extensive discussion. So what we would like to do. Is recommend an action. That uh after their installation of septic system at seventeen seventy-five Pinto Lane, until the town sewer system. Is extended down Pinto Lane. At which time the property will be required to connect. The hope is if sewer ever comes down Pinto Lane, it'll be at a more reasonable depth. Because if we're digging across Perkinsville Road, we're digging twenty feet deep, very dangerous, need special equipment and special safety measures. And we're closing that road for multiple days and uh. It's the convenience to the public and the the safety factors and the heavy trucks being rerouted. Uh, all leads me to say it's just common sense, not practical to require this connection at this time.
Okay, now personally, I don't like this at all. If we got a chance to get somebody on sewer, we can reclaim that water, treat it and put it back in the ground. I like that idea. I don't like the fact that we even, is there not another lateral down that road somewhere going down, not down Pinto, but going east on Perkinsville?
That's correct. At this location, it's unknown why the stubout was never put in with the original project.
Says another property to the east that's hooked on to sewer.
Multiple properties. If you look at this ingress egress easement.
Okay, you're on the south side of the road. I'm talking on the north side next to the.
I'm not aware of any on sewer, but I would have to research the records to make sure. Uh, all the lots back in. Chino Meadows one, that area there on se- on sewer. But that's at the top of the hill where the sewers.
Yeah, I'm just talking about on the same side of the street. There's um down to Anthony Lane there.
I would have to.
Sewers Anthony. Which is that last lot where the E is in Perkinsville, the first D.
Right, that's, that's about, so our sewer is shallower at that location, so if any lots are on sewer. They would have to have been built. After the sewer was installed.
They put a couple places in there, like. Lie lateral line down there versus letting this go.
That goes against engineering practices to have service laterals running in front of other properties. I wouldn't recommend it. Because, because you're running service laterals in front of other properties that are, may need to come out to the sewers. And how long do you run it? Why not? It needs to be a main when it's running down the street.
I thought there is a main running down the street.
It is. Being feet deep, possibly.
Hey, somebody else got something?
There's only about four other properties on Pinto Lane, isn't there?
At this time, that's correct.
Right, and at the end of that, uh, one person owns all that land.
I wouldn't, wouldn't doubt you.
So. I don't see you running the sewer line at any time at all going down Pinto Lane.
That question would be answered with a sewer master plan that has not been developed yet. Uh, we're looking at it. But it would, in my common sense opinion, maybe not in my lifetime.
Cause you already have the street marked off down there. From the manhole over to the property. On where he would have to dig.
Well, there might have been utility locates, correct.
Yeah.
That's a service we provide as a utility agency.
And uh it estimated twenty thousand dollars to put in that sewer line.
Experience, that's some of the cost. It would take trench boxes. We'd have to, whoever pays for it would have to get an excavator in. Our backhoes don't dig that deep. And you would have to create a detour route for the truck traffic on Perkinsville Road. Uh, probably like they did for the subdivision, detour them up to Four North and Jerome Junction from One East.
We're talking about one property for a septic tank.
Right, Perkinsville forty-four subdivision was a hundred and sixty-two homes. They actually got an easement from the adjacent property owner and ran their main through the easement. Where they caught grade at twenty feet. So it's. Engineering practices, sewer laterals need to be at right angles to the main.
It gave you to be more than twenty thousand, cause that was. The estimates you were getting was more than, or the. Charges that you've seen were from previous years.
Right, we did a few, a few years ago on One West and they were in that range. Or the homeowners did.
Nowadays.
So uh, we haven't had any, we're requested an engineer's estimate at this time. And, yeah, so.
And the Perkinsville forty-four, you ran that in front of the Bonnie. Uh, Grove Plant down there?
He easement from the Bonnie Plant property owner. Because the way the subdivision flows is to the north. So it was lower than the sewer at the end of their subdivision, so they had to go down the hill to catch grade. To, to connect into the sewer and that's, they made a private.
But.
Uh, deal to.
But what you said, you didn't wanna do lateral in front of other properties.
Right, they ran to.
This brings up the question that the mayor had and you said that it shouldn't be done.
Uh, individual service line needs to come straight to the main. Is general practice, what they. Sewer main a parallel line. And got county approval for the extension of that. Main, uh, which the county is delegated by ADQ to approve those main extensions.
Okay.
So.
That, I look at the bottom line of this whole thing and you're asking us to. Wade the sewer connection requirement for this individual property so long as the septic system can be approved. How's that happen?
The county approves septic systems, the town does not have that authority.
So nothing can happen until the county says it's okay. Is that correct?
That's correct, and with the amended motion, it would be, it would allow septic pending county approval. Until such time as sewer is at a better location.
Right, am I correct? We're not a waiver, we're amending, we're amending the, the.
Hooked down sewer.
Readdressing the recommended action compared to what was in our.
Right, what what you see on screen is different than what's in the packet.
The uh, Frank, the uh, it says here that when the line is extended down Pinto Lane, they will properly be required to connect.
That's correct.
If they have a work in septic system, they're gonna have to shut it down and hook up uh.
In this case, that would be correct, because currently they're required to connect under the current rules, so. It would just suspend that connection until it's more feasible to connect to another.
So they're gonna be paying for a septic system and a sewer hookup.
Is the applicant here? Is this the gentleman building his house by himself?
Correct. We've been going over this for several months now at a staff level, trying to figure out a solution.
Okay, is that all the discussion? Any over there, anymore? Okay, we'll retain the motion. I make a motion, recommend action. Approve the installation of the septic system at seventeen seventy-five Pinto Lane. Until the town sewer system is extended down Pinto Lane. At which time the property will, will be required to connect. Can motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Um, we never had decided who's gonna do the adjournment thing now that Mister Turner's gone. Who you appoint to do that for you, Lon? Okay. Sherry, it's up to you, he said. You gotta make a motion to adjourn.
You say, I make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.